So I'm going to call to order a meeting of the Oregon School District Board of Education. It is Monday, January 27th. And I'm just going to stop for a minute because in 2005, the United Nations designated January 27th as International Holocaust Remembrance Day to honor the victims and ensure the atrocities are never forgotten. Over 1.1 million people, mostly Jews, died in gas chambers or from starvation, cold, and disease at Auschwitz before Soviet forces liberated the camp on January 27th, 1945. Across Europe, 6 million Jews were murdered during the Holocaust. May we remember these horrors always, may we remain vigilant against hate in all its forms. Okay. We are at the OSD Innovation Center at Oregon High School. Katie, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Bijak?
Here.
Dr. Bush?
Here.
Ms. Garrison? Dr. Lakuta?
Here.
Mr. Pankrats?
Present.
Ms. Wright?
Here.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes, board does have a quorum. Heather did let us know that she would not be here tonight. So we do have proof of notice from Ms. Heights, so we are good there. And on our agenda tonight, we do have two action items. And then please note that we will not have a closed session tonight. So we will not have that on our agenda tonight. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve that agenda.
I'll make that motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. All right, then moving on to our consent calendar, I do have the following donations to read. And there are quite a few tonight, so that's great. $100 from Carrie Janes for the food service, donation to food service for a student in need in memory of Lou Ann Tober. We have three full backpacks of school supplies donated to students needing school supplies from the Twin Runners Snowmobile Club. $5,000 fidelity charitable for the splash pad. $100 from Molly Mae Toma for the splash pad. $500 for the splash pad from Lake Ridge Bank. $25 from Kelly Maluski for the splash pad. $50 from Linda Weiss for the splash pad. $100 from Adam Sunday for the splash pad. $50 for the splash pad from Francine Tompkins. And then $35 for this 7M Upam Woods Field Trip donation from Jeremy and Beth Alshoffel. $35 for that same field trip donation from Daisy Christian. 100, oh, sorry, $10 from Brian and Melissa Peckin for the 7M Upam Woods Field Trip. And then $35 from Sarah Drew Insurance and Financial LLC for that field trip. So thank you to those individuals and entities for their donations to the Oregon School District. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion on any items on the consent calendar? Okay, hearing done, Katie, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Pankrats?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Dr. Bush?
Yes.
Dr. Lakuta?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes, motion carries six zero. Moving on to B, information items, public comment. Do we have anyone here for public comment? We're going to do that as part of the election update, so we'll call you guys up in just a minute. All right, anyone else here for public comment? Okay, moving on to two, OEA report. We do have representatives from the OEA, but they will not be speaking tonight, so we'll move on. And then our student could not be here tonight, so we are zipping through information items tonight. All right, we'll go to C, action items. First action item tonight is the 2025-2026 open enrollment spaces. So I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Bergstrom.
Thank you. We have spent quite a bit of time going over the numbers related to open enrollment and comparing what we are seeing as a trend from past years to be able to predict the open number of seats. This is really an important, this is something that Ms. Jonen takes a lot of care and detail in, so I'm going to pass the ball to her to talk this through.
Thank you, Dr. Bergstrom. And I want to say a special thank you to Katie Heights as well as Julie Fisher, who is our new registrar in the district office. She also was the head admin assistant at the middle school for several years and has come back to us. And this was her first open enrollment journey with Ms. Heights and myself. And so she just did a fantastic job, so I wanted to say a special thank you to her. So just to ground us all in our thinking, what we'll be asking the board to do tonight is to approve the number of spaces in each grade for open enrollment. And to tell you how we reached that recommendation is we look at a number of factors. We do strive to maintain our class sizes of 22 students in grades K through 3 and 25 students in grades 4 through 12. It's not a hard and fast number, but those are the guidelines that we really keep in mind as we set the spaces. We do look at DPI recommended caseloads in special education as well as weighted caseload in special education. And I think it would be no surprise that we are recommending that we not have space in any of our special ed programming such as occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech and language. We have had a great increase in our number of students that need an IEP even since the start of the school year, and we do expect that trend to continue. We also use a lot of historical-based data to try to determine resident growth as well as talking to developers with new developments in our school district because we want to make sure that we save space for our resident students. And then as part of our fiscal responsibility, we do look at the impact on our budget. And so we did note that we have 31 seniors who are open enrolled that we expect to graduate. And so we do try to keep our numbers consistent or increase where we have the space because it does help us with our budget. So looking at our historical data, if you want to turn to Table 1, you can see the sections in Column B, the number of sections that we predict in each of our grades for the next school year. And then looking in Table, or Column, Table 1, Column D, our current enrollment as of January 17th. For 4K, that is an estimate based on our current 4K numbers. And then we look at the number of spaces to reserve for resident growth, feeling comfortable with where we have been historically. And so if you look at E, we do feel that we have room in our four-year-old kindergarten as well as our kindergarten section. One of the helpful things about 4K and kindergarten is that we can place students in the different elementary schools to round out those class sizes. And certainly that depends on transportation, but we just have more flexibility there than we do in the grades after that because, as you can imagine, once people get in elementary school, they want to stay there, which is wonderful. And so we are really tight on space. We have a little more room starting in 4th grade because that's where our class size can go up to 25. So that's what generates the space there. So we recommend two spaces in 4th, 5th, and 6th grade, and then none in 7th, 2nd, and 8th. And then we have ample room at our high school just because we have more flexibility in the class selections there. So then Table 2, we thought it would be just helpful to show you the historical perspective, what our resident and open enrollment has looked like over the past four years. And then we also do look at, and I should have explained that state law requires that we set the number of spaces at this board meeting. We can open more space up in June if our numbers permit, but we can't, we can't, if our numbers don't permit, we can't have fewer spaces than what we set tonight. So we do tend to be a little conservative now because we have more growth in the spring. So we did look at going back several years from mid-June when we set our final space to how many people then move in throughout the school year. And so we do take a look at that. So if you're interested, you can see which grades have moved in and moved out and what our net looks like. So with that, I will open it to questions.
All right, who has questions for Gina? Go ahead, Troy.
Gina, I just kind of want to play out the scenario here using 3rd grade as an example. So we have 285 enrolled. We've got room for 286, so one more. So let's just say an additional five students move in between now and June. That would likely lead to another section, us to needing another section for 3rd grade, correct? Which would then allow us to have potentially room for more open enrollees?
It could. So we also look at move outs, right? So we could have a balance there. But yes, then we would look at, given our growth, do we have enough students to justify adding a new section, right? And then that might be where we would come back in June and say, we do need to add this section, and so we would like to open up more spaces because we have additional room that we didn't anticipate in January.
Yep, okay, thank you, that's it.
Go ahead, Anna.
I remember asking this last year, and I don't remember the answer. So we talked about not being really in a position to accept students in special education, and the majority of the spaces that we are opening up are in 4K where those special education needs may not be identified. So remind me again what the process is that we use to either accept a student if we don't know those needs, or if we, if those become a situation. Is there, what's the risk associated with that, I guess, is what I'm getting at? And how do we handle that in practice?
Sure, so what DPI directs us to do is that if a student were to enroll as a regular education student, and then within that year, or even possibly thereafter, if they would then be evaluated for special education and qualify, and the family would consent to services, then we do have the ability to have them go back to their resident district. And so I would say we have our general practice of if we know within the first month, within the first six months, that a student really was a student that needed special education programming, and we didn't have space in that particular program, and the family did want services, which we recommend that they do, right, but it's their decision, then we do talk with them about going back to the resident district because we want them to have the services that they need. And if we don't have space for them, then we're not the best place for that student to be, as well as, you know, if there's a, as well as treating students the same, that if there's a student that did qualify for services in July before they came to us, maybe through birth through 3, and another family qualifies in September, that it's really more equitable to have them both be in their resident district where they can get services where there's space. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's really helpful. And I'm, I guess I'm curious if even there's a situation where the family may decide to move into district. I don't know if we've ever seen that happen, but
It does happen.
Another option for families, obviously.
Yes, it does happen more frequently where students have been here and want to stay here, or their siblings here. And so that would be the path to being here, is to move into the district.
Okay. One other quick question. For the open enrollment table, Table 2, we give the open enrolled, the students enrolled in, and then we have the open enrolled out. Remind me of the open enrolled out, is that, does that include kids who may be homeschooled? Or is that just students who are selecting a different school to attend besides Oregon?
Yes, it is students that are registered in another school district. So for example, then when we look at the highest number of students who open enroll out, go to McFarland, and that's to take advantage of the virtual academy.
Right, okay. Thank you, that answers my questions.
Go ahead, Leslie.
So I just wanted to find out, this is back on the special education programming, and you may not know this answer, I don't know. For, since we're not looking at offering any additional spaces for that, how close are we on programming for our own students?
So that is a great foreshadow to the staffing request that you will see in February or March. Even since the beginning of school year, we have had a number of students move in that have needed multiple special ed programming. And so we have been looking at caseloads to see if we need to add additional staff or what might be the best way to service those students. And so I do expect us to have requests in terms of, we're looking at that now, what might be the most effective way to service our students, particularly looking at the needs we have in 4K and in kindergarten. Because there aren't a lot of options outside of our district as there are when students get older. And so we, we're just talking about that in our meeting this morning as we have to look at different ways to service our students. But we do anticipate funding staffing requests, which leads into the action item that Mr. Wyland has tonight.
Go ahead, Mary.
Gina, remind me, if a family wants to open enroll, and for example, they had a student in 3rd grade and a student in 5th, would we say yes to the 5th grader and no to the 3rd, or how would that be handled?
Yes, we would do that. And then we would have a decision to make in June where we could open more space, and then siblings would have preference under our policy. But they're not, but it would simply be, it would only be a matter of the space that's available. And we have had that happen where we have said, no, we simply don't have space. And then usually families choose to not attend because it is very hard to have simply in one district and then in another.
Thank you.
Caleb, anything from you?
Just a couple of things. The first thing is, I think it's worth pointing out that current enrollment's over 4,000. So that's something, that's a big number. So I just thought that was, you know, it's worth pointing out. The other question I have is, or this is actually the question I have, is when looking at the number of spaces available that we're estimating, which is 90, and when you look at the historical data in Table 2, the number of approved applications versus the number of attended, the number of attended is always less. Sometimes, I think one year it was, by my estimate, like 60% of the applications approved, students attended. Have there ever been discussions, or are there discussions about that 90 number and taking into account that perhaps not everybody, if 90 are approved, not all 90 are going to attend? And playing with that number to make it larger, to kind of like take some of that into account? I don't know how you would, you know, like do actuarial analysis or something of that. I don't know how you would do that. But have those discussions ever happened? Or is the 90 number like the maximum we feel comfortable with given what we want to see for, reserved for residential growth?
I would say I do tend to be conservative in the recommendation because you're right that it can be 60%, it can be 90% in any given year of who attends. And so, but because we can't go, we can't have fewer spaces, we can only have more, I do make the assumption that everyone will attend. Also because in June, I would say our acceptance rate is lower just because families want to know, right? But I want to be really careful that the open enrolled students don't tip us over our class size guidelines. And so I think we've, we've done a very good job of doing that. It also does depend what the districts around us do because as they get, as they open up more spaces, that gives parents more choice, right? And so that does impact. But I would say in the last few years, we have more people attend than not. And sometimes they change to resident students because they move in over the summer. So even though it looks as though people haven't, that we haven't filled the spaces, it's actually because they've moved in and they're not open enrolled students anymore, they're resident students. So that's a good thing.
My question is about 2nd grade, and it's kind of converse to Troy's question. You know, we've typically had class sizes of 300 to 325. And so I'm looking at the number of spaces reserved for resident growth is 20, which the class sizes around it are 9 and 1. So I guess I'm asking, you know, why do we think that there's going to be a resident growth of 20 students in 2nd grade? And why we would not maybe marry that with open enrollment?
So in 2nd grade, we have to look at where the students are. And so trying to keep those class sizes at around 22 because we don't have that flexibility. So we do have, we do watch certain classes to see where residents move in. And so that might be another one where we open up space, but we're hoping to get by with the sections that we have and where our growth is. And so we just don't want to tip any one school over that number because it might mean that some schools might be at class sizes of 22 and possibly 23, but we haven't, we don't know our move outs yet. So we're just not comfortable opening right now because we don't want to tip any of those class sizes above 22. But that is one where we're watching, where we might add a section. And then we would, as Troy pointed out, we would open up those, we would open up more spaces.
So let's say we have more move in at FES. Would we, and have space there, but we're full at another, would Noel? So we, we would not move resident students, but we would move an open enrollee that we would choose the school that the open enrollment family would go to?
Correct, because we're really monitoring the west part of the village and then more north over by the Quick Trip.
Which one?
True. I call it the north Quick Trip. But because we don't, we don't know how many students we're going to get from those new developments, right? So we're watching that carefully for the spring.
Okay, so I think the important thing for the board is, as we've talked about in previous years, this is a really important revenue piece to us. We always are looking to serve our resident students, but open enrollment helps this district in a significant way. And it's a credit to this district that we have such a net positive of open enrollment. It's also important why these numbers are conservative, as Gina said, right now, because it gives us flexibility to go up. We can never go down, we can always go up in terms of open enrollment. So it's, it's a science, but you guys do a wonderful job. So I will entertain a motion to approve, or it could be converse too, so.
Okay, I move to that the board approve the number of spaces for open enrollment as written in Table 1, and that we also determine that there are zero spaces for special education enrollment, open enrollment coming, going to this next year.
All right, is there a second to that motion? All right, Mary with a second. Any further discussion? Anything you'd like to add, Dr. Bergstrom?
Only that, as you had mentioned, how important open enrollment is for us fiscally. However, we are very cognizant of our class sizes and ensuring that our students who are here are getting the best experience possible. And it is a bit of a science, and I'll also say, it's a bit of an art too. So it's a delicate balancing act, and I feel that we have been able to do it well thus far.
Okay, Katie, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Dr. Lakuta?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Dr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Pankrats?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes, motion carries six zero. Thank you, guys. Okay, moving on to the action item number two, which is approval of the 25-26 budget timeline. So I'm guessing that's you, Mr. Wyland?
You would be correct. So it is that time of year again when we start thinking about next school year, believe it or not, even though we just got through the first semester. So we were all in, at the conference, and so I apologize for adding a bunch of information into the agenda item regarding timeline that was related to the budget, but I thought it was, it was fairly relevant. So I put some information in there about what we know, or more likely what we don't know for the budget. Every year, the state goes through a two-year budget planning cycle, and we're in that process. So, and there's a little bit of unknown related to how much more money per student we're going to get based on some court count, court case that's out there. So I thought, based on our recommendation, and we used to do this a number of years ago, but we kind of fell away from it. But just kind of looking at our budgeting process and making sure that it's, everybody's on the same page and everybody's getting what they need as we kind of move through it, we decided that we just put it in writing that kind of this is our plan as far as how we develop the budget. So February, we'd look to be doing a budget plan workshop with the Board of Education, and we'll work out that date as we kind of move on here. And then March, we're looking for kind of an initial preliminary, very preliminary budget, I would call it, and talking about staffing in our capital plan so we can get things in place for next school year at that point in time. And then April to August, we're kind of waiting around a little bit, although I'm more than willing to augment this timeline with additional things that the board may need. But we're going to be probably waiting to see what the state's doing to try to figure out how that's going to go. And then September, we have a real good kind of line on what our enrollment's going to be. If our enrollment's up, that gives us a little bit more flexibility. We experienced that this last year. And then that's when we, our annual meeting is, so we're talking about how this year finished as well as kind of our best projections for the next, for the next school year. And then October is when we typically approve the, what's called the original budget in Wisconsin, which is, once you have all the different pieces of information, you get to kind of put that together and stamp that, kind of say it's done for the year. Although we also do budget adjustments, but for the most part, it's, it's kind of, kind of done. So with that, I'll just ask if there's any questions or thoughts or additions you'd like to see. We're happy to make modifications if this timeline doesn't meet your needs.
Okay, questions for Andy.
Okay, I just have one, I just want to comment, and I'm happy you put that in there about special education categorical funding. And it was pointed out, and I was standing next to Andy at the session in Milwaukee, that actual special ed funding has gone down when you look at the price of inflation and the funding that was put into that fund, that we actually received less instead of more special education funding next year. So I think it's just really important as we move forward that we continue to tout what was completely, completely lacking from the legislature in terms of funding of special education services. And so Andy, what is the amount that we have transferred to our general fund from our special, for special education this year?
We've talked about this, 8.3 million, all right.
8.3 million dollars.
Leslie's memory is better than mine at times. I knew it was eight, but I couldn't remember the point three.
So for every dollar we spend, we're getting 29 cents, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, and special education.
Yes.
And, and I think that's really relevant because if you listen to some of the conversations that we've had, we've had a lot of special, students with special needs moving into the districts.
Right.
Okay, go ahead, Caleb.
I'm just going to follow up on what you just mentioned. And I was just looking for where I saw it, and I can't find where I saw it. I tore it out of the actual publication. There was a table in a publication sent out by the Wisconsin Association of School Boards that showed how things have changed since 2009 in terms of the per pupil funding increases. And before that, it was tied to the Consumer Price Index, now it's not. And since 2009, I'm fairly certain, and I want, that's why I wanted to look, but I'm fairly certain every year, the gap was more than the Consumer Price, or it was smaller than the Consumer Price Index. Some years it was quite a lot smaller, some years it was fairly close. But I think it's also worth pointing out that much like the funding for special education, overall funding for schools has, if you think about just inflation alone, right, for the better part of 15 years now, we haven't been keeping up with just inflation in the state of Wisconsin. And I think it's very important to also note that as we think about our budget in the next few months.
And why that's germane to this discussion is why it's, it's really difficult and makes your job more difficult in terms of the funds. And we're, and we're considered a very healthy district around the state. But as we look at staffing, all of that really impacts our ability and our decision-making to fund what is necessary in this district. So here we are. Okay, I will entertain a motion about the timeline.
I'd make that motion to approve the budget timeline as presented in Purple C2.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the timeline? Okay, hearing done, Katie, could you please call the roll?
Dr. Lakuta?
Yes.
Mr. Pankrats?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Dr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes, motion carries six zero. Thanks, Andy. Okay, moving on to D, discussion items, committee reports, division steering. Heather is not here. We did have a meeting on January 22nd, and so we'll be furthering those discussions. And some of those things will end up coming back to the board in the future. I don't think we do have a new date for vision steering, do we? Oh, we do?
February 19th.
Okay. Thank you, Caleb. All right, Policy Committee, that would be Mary.
Thank you. Our next Policy Committee meeting is on February 20th. And I think I gave an update of the last one already.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to E, information items. First information item is the 2025 Spring Election. So April 1st is the date for the 2025 Spring Election. And so the two seats that are up for election, in that election, are Area 1, which is the Village of Oregon, which is a seat being vacated by me. And so as we do each year, we give opportunity for the candidates in each of those races to come up and talk for about three minutes, introduce themselves, and share why they are running for school board. So the two candidates that have filed papers for Area 1 are here tonight. So Nathan, why don't you go ahead and come up, and then Matt, he'll be after him. So introduce yourself, you can turn on the microphone, and three minutes are yours.
Thanks so much. Good evening, everybody. I'm Nathan Hensel. I'm at 6:30 Inverness Street here in Oregon, Wisconsin. It's really a pleasure to be with you all tonight. Thanks for asking me, and hello to the administrators, everybody in the crowd, and those that might be watching online. So, you know, as I want to tell my story, you know, first off, two boys. One recently graduated here from Oregon High School. He's now thriving successfully at UW-Madison, pursuing an engineering degree. And my, our youngest son, Jake, he is a junior here, and I think he's playing or practicing basketball in the gym right behind us. So, you know, really, really great new story of all the wonderful things that they had the exposure and experience to while they were students here at the district. And honestly, as I think through kind of my life, my history, and my story, I'll share a couple of minutes of here briefly with you all to kind of, you know, get to my point of my interest. You know, K-12 education and education in general has really been a part of me my entire life, right? Obviously, went through K-12 education myself. But during that time, my grandmother was a 5th grade school teacher, and I would always go with her to the classroom while she was prepping the room for the school, really got to see all the work she did on the teacher's side of getting that ready. And I always kind of stuck with that and kind of liked how all that stuff worked, right? And so as I was, you know, in high school, I started working in the computer lab, helping pull cable back when that was a real thing, before we had other, you know, more modern things, if you will. And, you know, eventually I ended up working for the school district right after I graduated. So I worked for a K-12 school district that I graduated from for about five years in technology, working on servers, computer labs, software, and trying to keep kids from ruining their computers back in the day. So nonetheless, you know, have seen, you know, presented to the in front of the faculty, and, and really start to help, help me through kind of, you know, my, my journey on that side. I then worked in higher education and spent about 15 years working in higher education, and I now work in healthcare. And in, in those roles, I have been a technology leader and a technology employee. And in those leadership roles that I have most recently held, I'm a people manager, I'm a financial manager and leader, and I have, you know, a lot of contract and, you know, programmatic experience across, you know, vendor, vendor management, things of that sort. And so when I start to package all that together, all the way from my history in K-12 education, you know, having, you know, gone through, seen what my grandma did, you know, worked in a district, you know, it's just always been a part of me. And ever since my, my, my wife Karen and our two boys, Andrew and Jacob, moved up here to Oregon, you know, obviously, the district drew us to the town, right? And it's just, it's just done great for our boys. And so, you know, my civic duty way of being able to give back is hopefully to throw my name in the hat and see if the, if the voters think I could help, you know, you know, keep an excellent tradition that you all have, you know, so carefully curated and moved on for the experiences for my family and my boys. So that's a little bit about me, my interest, and, and hopefully seeing what the voters have to say here come April 1st. So thanks so much for your time, everybody.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, Matthew, you're up.
Hi, everyone. My name's Matt Ledbetter. Again, thank you for inviting us to come and speak to you tonight. I've lived in Oregon for a little bit, more than five years now, and I live here with my wife Danielle and our two boys, Oliver and Henry. Oliver is eight years old, Henry's not quite five. And a big reason for why we moved here was the school district. I'm a big proponent of showing my boys of what I think you can do to better the world, and I try to do that in everything I do. I coach them in soccer, try to give them a good example of, you know, help others grow, help, help everybody be the best they can. And when I learned about this opportunity, I thought, you know, this is another time that I can do that, where I can try to help push things forward, help be a good example, and just, you know, if I can make the school successful, that means I can help make my boys successful, because education is just perhaps the most important thing I can give them at this point in time. So I wanted to take the opportunity, throw my hat in the ring, and, you know, see, see how things go. Appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you. All right, the other area up for election is Area 2, which is Fitchburg, Blooming Grove, and Town of Dunn. And Leslie does not have an opponent, so go ahead, and here's your time, and congratulations on your election to the Oregon, reelection to the Oregon School Board.
So I just wanted to say, first of all, that over the last three years, it's been really an honor to serve with you guys, to be able to actually give back to my community in a way that I hadn't before. I had served in different roles before, but the, I've found that over the last three years, serving with you, that the passion I already had for helping to educate and help kids succeed, and to help with teachers any way that I could, has just grown immensely in, as I have, because the learning in this role is just tremendous. So that's, that's a huge thing. The other part is that I would like to say that everyone on this board, and the administration, has supported each other. We may not always agree, and there have been, sometimes there have been muted conversations about things that we didn't agree on how things should go down. But everyone really cares about our kids, they care about having the best quality teachers, and taking care of our staff in the entire district. And it gives, it makes me have the very minus, minor amount of hesitation based on the amount of work that goes into this role. But when I sat down and I weighed the pros and the cons, there was no way I wasn't going to put my hat, or put my name back in and continue to make a difference in my community here. And I look forward to continuing to grow and learn and help the kids and teachers with you guys.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to two, report on the WASB convention. So as our tradition, we, the, this past week in January, we always go to the Wisconsin Association of School Board conventions with administrators in Milwaukee, and there are keynote speeches, there are lots of breakout sessions about a variety of different topics. So we always like to bring back to this meeting and have both administrators and school board go around the room, just give one or two or three things that were most impactful to you, so share that briefly with us, and, and we'll continue on to the next person. So why don't we start with administrators this year? Who would like to go first? Leslie, would you?
Absolutely. Usually I go last, and everybody said everything, so it's kind of fun to go first for the, the first time. But I was very strategic in the sectionals that I selected. I was looking specifically for districts who are telling their story connected to student achievement, and things that they have implemented in order to really move the needle related to the number of students who are proficient and growing academically. And I was able to visit or witness one of the participation by several of our Dane County districts, and it, even though we speak frequently, it was really terrific to see the way they had displayed information or put something that I already knew but in a slightly different light. So already, thankfully, Katie is very patient with me, and I've already started a project. So thank you, Katie, for being patient with me when I come back from a conference and have a whole bunch of new stuff to do. But, so thank you. Also, attended a presentation by a district that's north of here, that has very similar demographics, size, et cetera, and learned about what they have done to move the needle to be about from the 50th, as far as 50th out of 421 districts related to their state report card, to ninth. And I thought that that type of growth, listening to what they did and how they did it, was really fascinating and made the experience well worthwhile.
Andy, would you like to go?
Sure. So I obviously follow the school finance track for the most part. Just some information that I thought I'd share with you that you might feel, find is relevant, and actually connects to kind of things that we were just talking about. Demographics are shifting in our state a little bit, and actually, something that we hopefully aren't going to experience, but many of our neighbors in the community, in the school community are, is actually the enrollment is going to be declining from a state perspective for students. It's projected from now until 28, 29, a 7% reduction in student population. And the reason that's important is because our funding is really based on the number of students. So, and unfortunately, when you take away those students, some of the costs, the fixed costs related to providing education to students don't go away. And so that is really a, a kind of a, something for us as a state, as a state community want to think about, because it's going to put a lot of stress on a lot of our, our friends out there. In addition, at the same time that that's happening, we're going to be seeing some increases in students with special needs, and when I say special needs, not only from a special education perspective, but also ESL populations are projected to increase. So there's going to be stressors on places where we're going to need more resources, at the same time where we're going to be losing those resources. So something to, to kind of think about as we get into this budget process, and we have a chance to share that with our legislators. The other thing, and we've shared this before, but I'll just share it since you gave me the mic, is that, you know, we, in 2002, we used to spend, from a state perspective, we were the 11th highest spending district on K-12 education in the United States. Now we're 25th. And at that time, we were 11% above the average, and now we are 7.2% below the average for the United States. At the same time, in 2003, the K-12 education was, was about 43.1% of the state budget, general purpose revenue budget. In 2024, we were 32.2% of this general population. So unfortunately, that, that's a trend that hopefully we can stop, because we definitely need the resources to be able to work with our students. So that's just some information that I gained from one of our, our sessions from, from a WASBO person. The other thing that I thought was really interesting that John had actually attended too, so hopefully he's not planning on talking about AI too much, but we listened to the Pawaki School District and some of the great things that they're doing with, with AI. And I think the, the most important message that I got out of that was, just start. Like, you don't have to have it figured out, nobody does. Just start. Start learning about it, start teaching our students about it, because it's going to change things. And it might, we don't know how far it's going to change things, but it is changing things. And so we need to get into that and try to all kind of, not only from a organization's level, but personally, we need to start learning about those tools so that we can understand how that they're evolving.
Great. Gina, would you like to go?
So I just really appreciate the opportunity to go to the conference, and one of my favorite sessions, not surprisingly, is the school law update, because the amount of material that we are given for what we pay to attend the conference is just amazing. And Bob Butler has been doing this a long time, and he's just excellent, and I trust his advice very much. And so it's comforting for me to not hear anything new, because then I know that I've been on top of it. But there is a lot that has happened in the last week, and there's more to come. And so it's, it's just nice to see how, another perspective on that, and to make sure that we're in compliance with everything that we need to be in compliance on. So I do anticipate keeping the policy committee very busy in the next six weeks. So there's a lot of work to do. And so that's always a wonderful session. And then the other session, just a nice to hear that we're on track, is I went to a session on how to retain and recruit high-quality staff. And I took a picture of the slide, because they were talking about innovative trends, and they had researched teachers in Wisconsin of what they were looking for in a supportive workplace. And really, this could have been a slide about our professional sustainability task force. And so when I'm looking at Ms. Bijak, because the number one thing that came out, what teachers want is more planning time with coworkers, more collaboration time. And so that was something that just really was impactful to me. And if you look at the rest of the bullets, it's really not surprising that, and that it's a stressful job, and people want more support in mental health, more time to build relationships with their coworkers, and, you know, more flexibility to the extent that schools can provide. So really, the same themes that we found in our task force, and I thought that you should have been presenting there, Ms. Bijak, but, so wanted, yes, so wanted to highlight those.
Great. Darcy, John, Candace, Shannon, you guys want to come up?
I also went to two of the, the sessions that Gina went to, and had very similar feelings about them. I really enjoyed listening to the legal update and feeling like I understood what was happening, thanks to the leadership of Gina. I also went to the safety presentation that was done by Mount Horeb School District, and it was just really validating to hear all of the things that they emphasized, schools do as part of the proactive systems to be prepared, to be prepared, and how so many of those things were already incorporated into our systems, thanks to, you know, Andy and Shannon and Dawn. Like, I just, it was a very validating session, and it was really meaningful to listen to the crisis that our neighboring district went through just about a year ago.
Some of my notes have already been spoken about, so I won't repeat. One thing I don't think has is, I also attended one of the sessions by neighboring districts that talked about how they've adjusted to demographic shifts. And one of the things I found interesting was, in some of those districts, their, the demographics of different schools are very different, such as percentage of students who qualify for free reduced lunch, or, you know, ethnic demographics. And for us, we really don't have that, because most of our schools are fairly equivalent, they're pretty much the same, or relatively so. So that was kind of interesting. But, you know, we don't, we don't know that that's going to stay that way. And so one interesting thing that I, I noticed was, they, they talked about how they base their staffing and even their, their master schedule for different schools based on the needs that, they follow the student needs. And so it's not, things like class sizes and instructional coaching and intervention aren't equally distributed, they're equitably distributed. So they're assigned to the schools where the student needs dictate that. So I think that was interesting, because we talk about, you know, providing individualized resources for what the students need, instead of like a one-size-fits-all kind of policy. And so I think that was, and, and something that we've sort of taken for granted, that we do it pretty similarly across schools, but we might need to rethink that if our demographics change. So it's interesting to see some schools that are slightly, like just a few years ahead of us, in their demographic shifts, to see how they've handled that, and see what we can do proactively.
So I'm going to agree with Leslie, that it's always good to hear things that you're doing and have that validation, similar to what Darcy said. I went to a session, the first session I went to was on equitable, multi-level systems of support in the Nukleat High School, and that was great to hear. A lot of things that they are doing are things that our high school has had in place for a while, like link crew, focus on ninth-grade achievement, things like that. But also to hear about, you know, just making it more sort of part of their system, and just naming it as that. I also was in the, I spent quite a bit of time in the, in the, in the center where you pick up all of the goods, right? Which surprises no one who's seen my office. But Anna and I actually listened to a presentation by Oconomock High School students, and they talked about, they had a little presentation that we made them run through really rapidly, on how they get their service, their community service hours, and it was great. They get it all through, like they participate in their clubs, and their, whatever clubs they're in is doing a community service. They don't have a requirement at their high school, but they access their service hours through their clubs, which is, you know, some of our clubs do, and not all of them. So that's an interesting prospect as well. And then the third session that I wanted to talk about is, I went to the sensory regulation, which was not about actually teaching me how to use my toys that I picked up in the exhibition hall, but it is about regulation, and how do we help kids get to that point where they can cope with whatever stressors there are? Not just be calm, but keep their bodies in a, in a space where they can learn and attend and focus to what's important. And that, I, I think that's a really helpful one. Our OTs have led the charge, for the most part, across the years, in terms of helping people understand how to regulate and how to, how to help students regulate. We also need to keep going back into our levels of support and making sure that it's not just about pull-out support with our OTs. With the numbers that we are seeing in special ed, we can't possibly hire enough OTs to do it all outside of the classroom. So we have to work on making sure that we can help our, all of our teachers, whether that's through staff meetings or what it is, but we have to all get better at helping kids regulate, so they can stay focused and learn. So that was one of the important things, and that, then that just leads to that whole idea of how much we're growing, and, and looking at our neighboring school districts and how they've dealt with that growth. I mean, we have just, to say there's no space in, in special ed for next year is an understatement for sure. So thank you for the opportunity, and it was good to be there with you all.
For me, the most impactful session was the one that Darcy referenced. It was a collaboration between Mount Horeb and the Office of School Safety. And as Darcy mentioned, it was reaffirming to know that we're doing the same threat assessment, the reunification process, the planning, a lot of the same safety procedures. But what was most impactful for me from this session was the takeaways that they learned from the experience. And part of that is this idea of recovery. What happens after, the days after the events? And so they talked about a crisis team that comes in through the CISA that can come and help and support your team. They talked about immediately getting resources and materials to parents, the importance of supporting your staff and helping them get to a place so that they can support students, and also thinking about, how do you re-enter families and students into school to make it feel safe before learning can happen? And Mount Horeb said that was really a shift. They had plans for that, and then they kind of threw everything out the window the weekend before they brought kids back, and really had to think about that. My favorite quote from the presentation was, "Safety is not the absence of threats, it's the presence of connections." And so they've really been focusing on rebuilding the community. The recovery process takes several years, and they shared a, a graph that actually shows how long it takes to recover from such a tragedy. how long it takes to recover from such a tragic event. I had the opportunity to talk to Brian Johnson, who's the Director of Student Services in Mount Horeb, and he plays a similar role I do. And so it was really nice to just talk to him one-on-one afterwards too. Our Dane County Directors get together every month. And so we have a really nice network, but it's nice to be able to tap into that. And I'm really grateful that they were vulnerable enough to put out their lessons learned and they did a fantastic job.
Well, it's not surprising that the sessions that I chose, I anticipated had, would have a communication angle. And even if, even if they're not designed to, I find that there's always something, a little nugget that you can take that can impact your communications. So just a couple I'll highlight. There was one I went to on the district report card. And so we all get the state report card and a number of districts have taken steps to create, kind of to wrap around. So you have that, that state report card, but then to create their own one-page report card that showcases other things. And it seemed like many of the metrics they were using across the districts were related to redefining ready. So that was interesting. And there were some samples that they shared on as nodding. I think I saw you in that session as well. And I think I remember you asking a question during that session. So, so that was interesting, gives you something to think about. I went to a session on a high school that had an alternative program for students. It was a project-based learning program. And their kids did these projects and went out in the community. And so just the, the interesting thing that they shared, how that really impacted the community's perceptions of their high school. And so just thinking about different ways to leverage some of the things that, I mean, our kids do a lot of stuff in the community, really cool stuff, and to showcase that a little bit more. We have been doing some of that lately with our youth apprenticeship program where students are engaged in that program and they, they go, they're out and working in the community. And you know, that's, that's something where they get to know our kids and get a little taste of the great preparation that they have here in the OSD. And then I guess, I guess one other one, there was one aboard board member communication and amplifying how board members can amplify the voice of the district. So that just gave me a couple ideas. And then the other thing, so outside of sessions, the other thing I really appreciate is connections, of course, connections that we all make with one another. But now this has happened to me two times. When I was on my way, way out of my very last session, I was chatting with someone in the hallway and all of a sudden I heard my name and I looked over and it was one of my high school classmates. And she, and it turns out she's on a school board in New Berlin and oh my goodness. And this has happened a couple of times off, from college of mine was at a school board member in Wauwatoosa. So it's been really neat to know about that and make some of those connections that I haven't had in a while. And it's been helpful because then you have a connection in those districts. And when you hear something cool going on that they might be doing, you can contact and leverage that. So it's been neat.
All right, Leslie. So I didn't get to go to a whole lot of sessions due to my classes. I was only able to be there one day, but there are a couple of things. I was in the one that John mentioned on demographics. And one of the things that I found, other than what John mentioned, but one of the things I found interesting was one of the schools there hadn't previously had a summer school program. And so then they did some looking and tried to figure out how they could serve those kids because as Andy will tell you, summer school programs help your numbers. So we obviously have an amazing summer school program. But one of the things that they mentioned was making sure that the program was accessible to those kids who might not necessarily bus in or be able to walk distance-wise to wherever you're having those programs at. So my thought was, could we look at what our numbers look at in the outlying areas of our district? And would it make sense to expand our summer school program or cost-effective would that not work? So that was something that I thought was pretty interesting and looking at going forward, hopefully. And then I joined in on the transforming school meals, which was basically legislation. They're trying again and again to be able to have the state pay for free meals. And that was pretty interesting. We're doing a lot of the things already that they had suggested, other than continuing to push for, you know, the state to put a little bit more money in for public education and meals. And then the other one that I found interesting was, it was called Project 180. And it was four students at different high schools and they were in rural high schools. And then they also had their advisors there with them as well. And the students worked on this, it was a group project, but then they worked together between the different high schools as well. And it was, these students went out and they support, did some peer support for mental health and substance abuse and some things, some programs to both prevent students from starting those, having substance abuse problems. And also some things that they could do to help them if they knew of someone who was having some issues. And they told a story about a courageous young man who was on the basketball team and actually asked for information on what marijuana does to players' brains. And took that information, went back to the basketball team and said, "Coach, I need you to go out of the locker room for five minutes." And he basically took his team to task and said, "Look, this is the deal." Because he knew there were several members of that team that had been imbibing. And that they cleaned up their act and because it was coming from a peer, it was a little bit more receptive. And I have, I thought it was really cool and I was like, "Oh." And I kind of looked, I'm like, looking and looking and I'm not seeing Project 180. And then Krista tells me, "We already have a program that's very similar to that." So yeah, yes. So, and that's the only other programs I was able to actually attend, so.
Caleb, our delegate assembler.
Indeed. That's probably what I'll spend most of my time talking about. I did attend a couple of other sessions. One on, that I was particularly interested in, mostly because we're kind of dealing with the same issues or similar issues around what we're going to do with our school forest up at FES. Anna was there and I think she's going to talk about it. So I'm not going to steal her thunder because I have a feeling she's going to talk about it because she asked lots of questions and was very excited at the presentation. But I also went to that and was also really, it was a really great kind of demonstration about what, how much a school forest can add to education and gave, I think Anna and I lots of good ideas. The other session that I wanted to talk about very, very quickly, that I, mostly because it was part of kind of my own personal interest, was I went to a presentation by several people that were talking about Act 31 and how Native American topics are incorporated into education in the state. Part of it was because I was kind of personally interested. I used to teach, when I lived in New Mexico, I used to teach New Mexico history, what's significant, part of which involves Native American history. And so I was kind of curious from my own perspective, what the state's requirements are. So that was a bit kind of a personal connection and I also wanted to know more about it. And so that was really interesting. It was also really great because I got a lot of resources that, to think about both as a school board member, but also as an educator. Now I will talk about the delegate assembly. It was a hoot, to say the least. The first thing that happened was the clickers didn't work to vote. And I got a kick out of that because it probably, the first 15 minutes or so was probably just trying to get the clickers to work. And my, I sat there thinking, if this was a room full of teachers, this would never have happened because they would have checked to make sure that the, the technology in the classroom was working before they, I mean, that's something I learned. You know, you make sure the technology's working before you are on stage, but that's neither here nor there. When it came down to voting, there were a number of resolutions, and we talked about this at our last meeting about how we were going to, you know, whether we supported or opposed them. There were a whole bunch of resolutions and I will emphasize that they are just resolutions, right? They have no policy implication. They're just kind of, you know, the perspective of WASBA and what the school board's hope is the direction that the state will take. For the most part, things went kind of the way we were thinking we would, you know, support versus oppose. The only two that I wanted to mention was that the, the one that we talked about a little bit, which was 2502, the pathway to licensure for para-professionals. That voted, that passed by a lot. I voted no, but it passed by a lot. And I, I think we all understand that there are lots of school districts in the state that are really struggling to find teachers. And I'm very empathetic to that. It's not a problem that we face. In fact, if anything, I think, I think it's really notable how many of our teachers have more than a bachelor's degree. But with that said, right, I, I voted no because I still am very supportive of keeping standards high for our teachers. The other thing that I think is important to remember is that there are so many programs there, out there now for bachelor's degrees that people can get credit for prior learning. And a big thinking, a big part of my thinking was, if you have all of this experience, with a little bit of work, you can get a bachelor's degree. And that bachelor's degree gives you the qualification to then become a teaching professional. And so that's kind of my thinking, but that's not everybody else's thinking on that issue. The early literacy assessments, I also voted no. I actually got up and spoke on the floor that, you know, that we supported the resolution in spirit, but that, that we were concerned about the practicality and expense of providing testing materials in all the different languages that our students speak. It's certainly an issue that we're going to be facing more and more, you know, with the changing demographics in the state and the, and the country. And that also passed by a lot, even though I voted no. One last thing I'll say very quickly is that on Resolution 2504, which was about decoupling public and private school funding, we initially had said that we would support it. However, at the assembly, there were very good points made in opposition to the resolution. People got up and spoke and a couple people from Milwaukee, the Milwaukee School District, Public School District have got up and spoken, as you know, we all know Milwaukee has really been affected by the voucher program and those kinds of things. And they raised some really, really important issues about the, the effect that it could potentially have on actually negatively impacting school funding for public schools even more. I guess it's happened in a couple states where they've done that. And in those states, they've actually seen a decrease in public funding support, public school funding support. And so after that was, that point was raised, I decided that I think it made a lot of sense to, to vote in opposition and it actually ended up failing by quite a lot. The real issue, and the one that actually, there's already an existing WASBA resolution about this, is that the real issue is that I think everyone wants there to be transparency in the impact that the voucher program has on school funding. And a resolution already exists and obviously it has not had an effect because there is not transparency on how the voucher program affects public school funding. And I think that's the real issue and hopefully that will get addressed at some point. But otherwise, it was an interesting two and a half hours and lots and lots of debate. It was very funny because at the beginning, we were given instructions that they really didn't want people to call the question and kind of stifle debate, right? That they wanted people to be encouraged to talk. By the end, there were a couple of resolutions at the end that I think the very first person who got up called the question. If that gives you any idea of how kind of exhausting it was. Yeah, five hours. Yeah, two and a half hours is not bad compared to that. So anyway, that was my experience. It was a really interesting couple of days and I always enjoy it. So thanks.
I think they should give certificates for people that serve in the delegate assembly. That's worth like three credits of. All right, Anna.
So I went to sessions everywhere from AI to the environmental education that I'll talk more about. But I, I first wanted just to give a couple of things that I thought was interesting about the AI session that I went to. It was different than the one folks here were referencing. It was from a company that helps schools navigate AI technology within their school district. And some of the things that I really got from the session came from some of the questions and the people who had comments about how they are using AI or how it's shifting, what they're doing in their classroom because of AI. So two things, first is a lot of districts are using AI for their teachers that is helping with establishing, understanding trends in real time. You know, looking at data at real time to help make assessments, to make informed decisions about their teaching, the kids' learning. Also individualizing some of the learning with some tutoring and chat boxes and some different ways of using it in the classroom to facilitate their teaching. But from the kids' side, you know, a lot of us talk about, well, isn't AI allowing our kids to like cheat, right? Now they can just say, "Write my paper and do my math homework for me." And it was an interesting perspective. There was a board member there who said, "You know, I think our, in our district, we're shifting to a focus on teaching wisdom and the why. Because AI is here and it's going to help us do the math and do the number crunching, but we need to understand what it's telling us and why that matters." And, and also focused on creativity. So it was really interesting to think about how we're, I guess, teaching how to use AI because it's here, it's a tool, but how do we help make sure that we're not losing sight of what kids really need to learn from the use of that, what that's telling them. So I found that very interesting. The session I really got excited about, I asked a lot of questions, was called Investing in Environmental Education. And it was a talk from the Rice Lake Area School District and their River Dock Nature Conservancy. So they had land that was donated to them in 2021. I'm like, hmm, we had land donated to us one time. They had a steering committee for their school forest. They've, they had had this land just sitting there for, for some time, but they, so they initially had a school forest, but they had additional land donated. They had this steering committee. And then they really engaged in what does this look like? What is our vision for how we're using this school forest in education? And they invested in a facility, they invested in a school forest program director and they are leveraging their school forest. They have kids visiting that school forest every day of the school year. And she talked about how they are developing these lesson plans that grow with the kids through their school years. And so it was like 4K through eighth grade. These kids go to that at least twice a year and sometimes even more frequent when they're younger. And they're experiencing the school forest in each season. So they're seeing it different. There are, you know, these, what are they called, ramps, right? The onions? Like, you know, they're walking around in winter and they see, or they're smelling them in the spring and then in the winter, they see these little puffs and she's like, "Those are the ramps." And they're like, "Oh my gosh." And these kids get excited about it. And they're incorporating her lessons into like what they're learning in their classrooms for like second grade. If they're talking about math, they're going out there and in the forest, they're, what they're doing in the forest, learning about the forest is including some math elements of it, right? And so they're integrating what they're learning in the school forest with what the topics that are being covered at each of the grade levels. And so, you know, second grade, it was like, early childhood, it's the five senses. And in 4K, it's animal tracks. And in kindergarten, it's trees and snowshoes. They snowshoe, they have snowshoes. How cool is that? It, it was really, really cool. They do have to have snow. Anyway, it was, it was this master schedule of lessons. It was each grade, what they focus on, and then incorporated further into what lessons they're learning within their classroom that they can leverage at the forest. And these kids are like, asking these awesome questions and they shared a video of these kids. I'm like, this is so inspiring. And then so what they do is they, they have all these lessons and then she's getting feedback from the teachers. And then she's revising and updating her programming based on what teachers need, what the school board expectations are, what the administrator expectations are, and how are we using this? It was really, really awesome. They're doing an after-school program there just once a month, but they're like, they do a biodiversity program in the forest. They have ice skating, they have sledding, they have snowshoeing. It, it was just, it was really amazing. The board members are volunteering their time out there. I will volunteer my time. If there's a friends group, I'll join it. But it's a, they want to start doing some nighttime visits they talked about because at night, you know, you can, you see the at night, you know, you can, you see the stars, and you just have different animals, and you have just different ways of understanding that, that land and that world around you. The land stewardship and management falls on that program manager. So the woman who is in charge with actually facilitating the classes, she is removing snow, and she is mowing the grass. And so she's not only managing the program support, but also facilitating the land around it, and managing the friends group when she needs help with tree clearing, if a tree falls across the trail, that sort of thing. So they, they've had a school forest, they had, they had no trail, they had no program director, it just kind of sat there, but they focused on how they could leverage this, and they, they were intentional about it, and they have seen, really, the question was asked, are you seeing this have an impact on student achievement? Can you connect the programming and the work you're doing in their school, school forest to student achievement? And the gentleman who was there, the superintendent, said, yes, we have seen our improvement in engagement in the classroom, and we're seeing, this is definitely helping with our, our student achievement and just overall excitement of, of kids and the learning that's happening there. So it was really awesome, and I want to talk to these people more. So that's it.
Thanks, Anna. Mary? Do you want to comment? I know you weren't able to be there, but...
Yes, I, due to my work schedule, I was not able to be there, but I really, truly appreciate all of you who were and, and all of the wonderful information that you've brought back. So thank you.
Troy.
Yeah, so always inspiring to me. I always really enjoy this week. I always try to clear my schedule and spend as much time over in Milwaukee as I can. I want to tell the story about the new incoming WASB president, because I was just really moved by this. I don't know if anyone else was in that, it was one of the general sessions. And, you know, we all have our own reasons for doing what we do, serving on the school board. This gentleman, so he's the new incoming WASB president, was receiving the gavel at the general session, and he, he gave his introduction and told his story, and I was just so moved by it. He told us how he, he grew up in a small town in Wisconsin and had, went through school in a non-public school up until somewhere middle of high school, and it was, was not a, not a pleasant experience for him. And he was at a very, very low point in his life, and was, it sounds like essentially that school was no longer an option for him, and so he was transferred to a public school. And he told his story of walking in on, on day one, being greeted by the principal and was just welcomed with open arms, all, and his, all of his teachers were just very welcoming. And they were able to figure out what the student needed in life to be successful in, in high school. And he, it just completely turned his life around, graduated from high school. Two years out of high school, he ran to serve on that local school board and has been serving on that school board for 16 years. He's, I think he's 37 years old right now, and has, has just dedicated his life to school boards, and WASB has worked, kind of worked his way up through the ranks on, in WASB and is now our president. And I, I was just almost in tears. I mean, it was so moving and inspirational, and I, I just, I was just so thankful and inspired, re-inspired to, to do this work. So I wanted to share that story. And then the second thing I'll, I'll share is just one, a finance session that I had attended called Equity in School Funding. And they shared this, this map, among other things, but this is a map of, from, on one side is 2223 budget, the other side is 2324 budget, and it shows color-coded the districts that basically, non-disabled kids paying for special education. So it's showing in a, in a dollar amount how much money is basically coming out of our, our general population in order to pay for, for special education. And, you know, the red, the red districts are $2,500 or more per student. And what, what's, what's important here is that in the 2223 year, there were 15 districts that were at 2,500 or above, and in the subsequent year, we're up to 31 districts. So it's, the shift is, is, it's moving quickly in, in terms of how much funding is moving away from our, you know, from our general population. So those were the two things I wanted to share. So thank you.
Great. I just have a couple things. One, it was my last one. So it was really interesting to be there for the last time, and, and one of the things that I really enjoy is just spending time with, you know, we, we spend time with each other in, in meetings and more tense moments, but it's really nice to kind of be in a different environment and kind of get to know what's happening with everybody's families, and, and so I really enjoy that because you're all a group of highly intelligent, very caring people. So it's great, great to spend time with you. I think the second thing I'll, I'll talk about is I did also go to the changing demographics session from our neighboring districts and also the AI. And I guess one of the things that kind of struck me is, as adults, I think we get really set in structures. So, you know, what John talked about is that one of the districts is really looking at the kids in the classroom, and it's not defined that every class has to be so many, you know, class sizes and things like that, but we're really kind of moving away from structures that we're used to and, and figuring out how we're going to serve kids based on who they are, what special ed services they need, or what language barriers there are. So I, I think those are really exciting things that we can maybe somewhat put those aside and really think about, how do we need to operate as a school system outside of structures that may hold us back? I think AI is another example of that. When it first came out, we were all thinking, oh my gosh, this is terrible, kids are going to cheat. But now you look at some of the things that are available, and, and just one, like NotebookLM. I mean, my daughter is in dental school and writes her notes, and then she uses NotebookLM, and it becomes a podcast, so she can go for a walk and still study because it's created a podcast for her. So really embracing, and Peewalkie was amazing, they have made the deliberate decision, we are going to embrace this, this AI technology and make it work for us. And so again, I think it's kind of, and it ties into the keynote that we heard, there were some mixed reviews on, but the power of positive thinking, that we all tend to be stuck in negative thought processes or what can go wrong, but really, it's positive to wake up every day and say, what am I thankful for? What do we do well in this district? How can we do it better? And so I think there is absolute power in, in thinking positively in what we are doing well and what we can do better and what our kids can accomplish. So I think that was a really important thing for me at the conference and in my life is to really retrain my brain every day about what's going well and what's good. And then final thing, I want to thank Katie. Katie does a lot of work for us to get us registered, to get us hotels, to organize things, and, and those are, those take a lot of time when you're a busy woman. So thank you, Katie, for making that be seamless for us, that we show up, we're registered, we know what hotel we're going to, we know we're eating. So thank you. All right. Anything else on the convention? Okay. Moving on to Visioning and Strategic Planning, Teaching and Learning Update, and Superintendent's Report.
Well, thank you, everybody. I think a lot of what we have discussed related to our learning at the WASB conference was very much connected to our visioning and strategic planning framework, to the board's priorities, and to our OSD goals. As a matter of fact, if you look at the tracks of the learning sessions at the conference, they fit quite well with our overall goals as a district. And that's because what's important in education doesn't vary very significantly from one district to another. It's much more about what you do to bring those particular values or goals into the, I guess, experience of the people who are within the system, most importantly, the And now I've got some fun stuff to share with you, as usual. So the Wisconsin School Counselor Association recently recognized Forest Edge Elementary School Counselors Shelby Deegan and Aubrey Primo with the Program of Promise Award. Shelby and Aubrey will be presented with the award during the National School Counselor Week breakfast in February. This is an award granted to a small number of Wisconsin schools each year, and they have to submit a report with really stringent parameters around data. So the fact that our wonderful counselors are using so much data to evaluate the impact of their programs on our students is really exciting and a step in a great direction. And then congratulations to OHS educator Davey Burt, who is the recipient of the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. These awards are the highest honors for teachers of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And then each year, up to 110 outstanding educators from across the country are recognized. And so he was nominated for this award in 2017, he was named a finalist in 2021, and then was just selected as a recipient this month. So congratulations to him. He receives a certificate signed by the president, a $10,000 award from the National Science Foundation, and an all-expenses-paid trip to a recognition event in Washington, DC. Congratulations, Mr. Ebert. And congratulations to our young people who were nominated by our staff for the Martin Luther King Jr. Outstanding Young Persons Awards. The banquet was a week ago on a Sunday, a very, very frigid Sunday, where the kids all came together with their families to be honored. So congratulations to all of them. And January is National Mentor Month, and you can see some people having fun here together. We want to shine a spotlight on our Be a Champion Mentor Program. We serve about 70 students throughout the Oregon School District with this program, and community volunteers are matched with student mentees, and they meet for about an hour or so a week to engage in fun activities. And you can see, there's a little bit of fun activity happening on this one. So if you're, we're always looking for more volunteer mentors. To learn more and sign up, you go to our website, so oregonsd.org/community/volunteer. And Brooklyn had a Shining Star Award Ceremony. You might recognize Bobby the Bobcat there in the front. I believe she's also known as the building principal. So elementary, Brooklyn Elementary had an assembly highlighting habits of character, which are integrity, initiative, responsibility, perseverance, collaboration, and empathy. Students who exemplify these habits were honored with the Optimist Shining Star Award. This is a tradition supported by the Oregon Brooklyn Optimist Club. These awards celebrate student leaders who display a positive attitude, kindness, respect, and thoughtfulness. Thank you to the Optimist Club for recognizing and supporting our great kids. And here we have second graders at Netherwood Knoll. They're having a blast making dirt cups to learn, all kids would have a fun time making dirt cups, but there's a purpose here. They're learning about the steps of fossilization. Layer by layer, they recreated how fossils form over time, using materials such as crushed cookies for the soil, pudding for the sediment, oh my, sediment, excuse me, and Swedish fish fossils. What an impactful learning opportunity. I hope they didn't eat it. That's all I'm saying. Hope it, hope it. Yes. And then students at Brooklyn recently had the opportunity to welcome Emily Ballsley Illustration. Emily shared her journey as a designer, illustrator, and mural artist, bringing inspiring examples of her work. She also took home inspiration from our students, who shared what the Brooklyn Bs, be safe, be respectful, be a learner, and be your best, mean to them. And Emily will transform their ideas into a unique design, and in February, she'll return to paint a mural in the cafeteria. So this artwork serves as a daily reminder of these important values for years to come. And then our sweet Prairie View first graders, they wrapped up their unit on the sun, the moon, and the stars with a creative twist. They wrote beautiful poems titled, What a Sun Sees, and illustrated them with stunning watercolor paintings about sunny skies. So to celebrate, they shared their work with the second graders, spreading sunshine and inspiration. And then the RCI band had a fantastic concert. We love hearing you play. And our middle school, congratulations to the students who were selected as recipients of the Rising Star Awards for the Oregon Brooklyn Optimist Club. Students were nominated for this award based on their optimistic outlook in school, life, community, and school citizenship, support for others, and academic progress. So there's a lot of amazing reasons to be nominated. And I believe I saw a few of these kids down in the Margaret Williams, excuse me, that's East High School, in the Oregon Performing Arts Center downstairs for the ninth grade orientation. Oh, and I love these. So the Youth Apprenticeship Spotlight. So now tonight, we have Kalen. She's working as a certified nursing assistant at UW Health. Courses that have led up to this capstone experience include medical terminology, biology, anatomy and physiology, and chemistry, and Kalen has also learned, earned a CNA certificate. So what I love about this is it not only highlights the opportunity, but also the fact that there's a pathway to take to access this opportunity. And so really, the kids who are downstairs tonight with their parents, listening to Anna D'Amelio, our school-to-career educator, talk about the opportunities that are available to them as they're juniors and seniors, I think that's really important for the freshmen to be listening to that and considering. Here's another great one. So this spotlight's on Dalton. He's working as a youth electrical apprentice at Westfall. Now, the courses that led up to this capstone experience include Foundations of Technology and Engineering, Electronics, Construction Exploration, Metal Technology, and Dalton has earned OSHA 10 and First Aid Certifications. So those are also incredibly important. So if your student is a sophomore or a junior or even a freshman, now is a great time to start thinking about these options and planning forward so that you're taking the courses that build your skills so that you can have amazing experiences like this before you leave high school. And then a reminder to tune, tune into the podcast. This week, we have, January is National Mentoring Month, so the podcast is on the two young people in the center and their fabulous mentors. And I believe that's it.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to F Closing, Future Agenda. Our next meeting is February 10th, which is hard to believe, it's already going to be February, and hopefully we'll see you all there. So move on to Check Out. Mary, anything for Check Out?
I will not be there at the February 10th. I'm traveling for work.
Okay. Thank you. Troy. Leslie. Caleb. Anna.
I will be late to the February 10th meeting.
All right. All right. Anything else for Check Out? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. We are adjourned at 7:58.